Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's Schools Forum. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Alison Coleman. I'm the Chair of Governors at the Federation of Fairfield and Conneys in Felixstowe, and Chair of the Schools Forum. Could I ask everyone who isn't presenting to turn their cameras off, please, and remain on mute? And you'll be welcome to put your camera on when you're invited to speak if you have a question or wish to raise a point for any of the agenda items. I'll just run through the list of who I can see are present this morning. We have Amanda Havers, Adrian Orr, Alan Cadso, Andrew Berry, Angelo Goduti, Barbara Baraklaff, Christina Lewis, Colin Shaw, Darren Woodward, Gemma Morgan, Gemma Andrews, Jill Mitchell, Karen Lodge, Mike Quinton, Paul Furkin, Pete Mumford, Rowena Mackey, Roz Summerfield, and Ruth Coleman. So, welcome to all of you to today's meeting. We have a few apologies. There are Sue Prickett, Pat Chapman, Daniel Jones, councillor Rachel Hood, and Maria Kemble. So, welcome all to today's meeting. Let me now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the minutes of the last meeting that were held on the 13th of January. So, if we can go through for accuracy and matters arising page by page, and if anybody has any queries, please shout. As I look at the pages, I might not see hands go up, so please feel free to just intervene and speak if there's anything you want to raise. So, accuracy and matters arising from page one, and two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11. So, as I've had no one intervene, I'll take that that we accept those as an accurate reflection of our last meeting. Thank you very much. There weren't any matters arising or actions from those minutes, so there's nothing to report on in terms of updates. So, back to the agenda. The next item is Paper B, which is the High Needs Funding and Additional High Needs Funding Requirements. And I'll hand over to Gemma Morgan to present this paper. Thank you, Gemma.
Thanks, Alison. Good morning, everybody. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Gemma Morgan, and I'm the Head of Send Funding and Provider Services. So, the paper that I'm bringing to forum this morning was supposed to come in April. Apologies that it didn't. Due to illness, I was unable to attend, so I couldn't bring the paper. So, it's been moved to this meeting. There's three sections to the paper. The first is looking at the spend in 21/22, and then the forecast for 22/23 for the High Needs Block. Then there is the information about the additional High Needs Funding that Suffolk County Council have received. And then I'll go through the Delivering Better Value, which is a scheme that the DFE have introduced that Suffolk County Council are involved in. Okay, so if I go through the first section of the paper, so as I wrote in the paper, we continue to see a rise in demand for specialist places. And obviously, I can keep updating this with you as this year continues and as the autumn term begins. But as you'll see from the paper, the end-of-year position for the High Needs Block was, yeah, the High Needs Block was seven, just over seven and a half million pounds. And the paper goes through the details of what this was based on and why this was the position. We've had huge demand in requests for High Needs Funding for children who are in mainstream schools. We're seeing term-on-term hundreds of requests for children to have bands who have not previously had them. We also have seen a rise in demand for needs, spaces needed in special schools. So, we are opening new special schools. We're also asking our existing special schools to grow as much as they possibly can so that we can offer education to the children who need this specialist support. As I say, we've opened new provision. That's been both special schools and specialist units attached to mainstream school. Obviously, revenue funding is required to fund the places. So, the place funding, although it comes directly from the DFE to those schools, is taken from our budget before we receive it. So, obviously, that has a knock-on effect on the bottom line. And obviously, the top-up funding comes directly from our budget, and therefore, we have that additional cost pressure if those children aren't already within the system. We're doing our utmost to reduce the number of children who are in independent settings, but it does still continue to grow slightly. The introduction of new provision into the local offer will reduce that, or at least make it stay at a consistent level. I think with all of the new provision that we're opening, we need to consider that we're looking at cost avoidance as opposed to cost savings. The table also goes through the numbers of places that we've increased in our specialist provisions. And obviously, I can update that in the future and keep you posted on where we are with that, especially as we move forward with some more capital work that's been agreed. So, the other part of that section of the paper does talk about the overspend, the predicted overspend for 22/23. And that does look like it is going to be at least 5.2 million. So, that is outlined on page five, sorry, of the paper. At the moment, at the very beginning of the year, we predicted 5.2 million, taking into consideration everything we knew at that time. Now, my understanding is that that has grown to five and a half million. And we are also looking at the therapies that Suffolk County Council should be delivering to children that they aren't currently. So, again, that will have a cost impact. And therefore, I predict that that bottom line of 5.5 million will grow over the year as we know more about the therapies that we need to deliver. There are statutory responsibility. They're linked to the provision that is named in a Child's Education Health and Care Plan, and therefore, we have a responsibility to deliver that provision. It hasn't been delivered previously, so like I say, that will be an additional pressure on the budget. Okay, so if we then move on to the additional funding that Suffolk County Council have received. So, the DFE announced additional funding for all local authorities to support with the pressure and additional costs that schools and local authorities are finding themselves in. Every local authority has been given the responsibility to distribute that money how they see fit. And many local authorities do, every local authority seems to be doing it differently, some passporting different percentages of that funding over to the special schools and pupil referral units. So, what the proposal from Suffolk County Council is, is that we support our special schools and prues by giving them funding to support the increase in the national insurance levels that are going up for staff. We've done some internal calculations. Those are sensitive around salary information, so I haven't been able to include that in this paper. But it does come out that it would be 97,000 pounds, sorry, 97 pounds per commissioned place at both special schools and prues. Now, obviously, there is additional funding than what that will come to, and our proposal is that that is used to support the move for our special schools and prues along the transitional protection route. So, what we're trying to do is move everybody onto a fair and equal funding system, and that funding will allow us to do that in the original five years that we proposed. We also are looking to use them funding to meet the demand and the ever-growing costs on the budget. I mean, as I've demonstrated, the money that we received from the DFE did not address, didn't bring us up in line with our other local authorities. It didn't mean that we were able to pay for all of our statutory responsibilities without falling into further deficits. I've just noticed, Alison, that there's been some hands up. Do you want me to answer questions now, or do you want me to wait till I've finished the paper?
Yeah, I was waiting for a convenient moment for you to pause, Gemma, so it might be worth taking the questions we've got so far before you move on. So, I'll go to Andrew Berry first, please.
Thank you, Alison. Thank you, Gemma. Hopefully, you can hear me okay. So, for me, when looking at this paper, the two big areas of need are high tariff needs funding to support schools, mainstream schools with SEN, and increased places at special schools. I'm just concerned that the way that the funding is being proposed to use doesn't directly answer those two specific needs. So, the question is about impact and how we can use this funding best to support the pupils with SEND in our mainstream schools and in our specialist provision.
Thank you, Andrew. So, I think there's probably two answers to that question. So, firstly, the funding will be used for, so where we're receiving requests from schools to have more for children who need high needs funding, so those that increase in requests we're seeing year-on-year and continue to see, that funding will go into supporting them having high needs funding at the level that it is at the moment. And what it's meaning is that we're not in a position where we have to reduce the banding values or look at reevaluating those values to bring them in line with the budget that we are receiving. That is something that other local authorities are looking to do. I know one in particular that I spoke to this week is looking at having a capped amount for their budget. So, if their increase in requests for a certain band go up, then the band value goes down. So, this, using the money to support the process that we've always got in, already got in place, will mean that we don't have to look at changing those banding values at this moment in time. And the second question, I suppose, support for schools, so investment in our special education service as well. So, the service that Izzy Connell leads on will also mean that we can offer more support to the schools, have more provision available to them that they can use, rely upon, in order to support those children within a mainstream setting.
Great, thank you.
Can I just come back on that, Gemma?
Yes, Andrew. Yeah.
So, in terms of the underfunding of Suffolk, which is a key stress for all of us, and we are all trying to do our utmost to get some changes happening there, I just have a concern that if this money is used to support national insurance increases of staff, it doesn't give the key message that we are trying to support our pupils. I know you're saying it's indirectly supporting, but I believe we need to demonstrate that we are using the funding to support our current needs and are increasing these. And your paper quite rightly identifies massive increases in needs of our pupils. So, for me, it just seems to be focused on the wrong type of support. I absolutely agree that our special schools, specialist provision need additional support. I just have a concern with the way that that money is being pushed into those schools.
So, thank you, Andrew. And that's, you're absolutely right. We do need to be really clear about how we're using our high needs funding. And I'll talk in a minute about Delivering Better Value, which is a programme that we're involved with the DFE, which hopefully will address some of those concerns. The money that we're proposing to give to the special schools is only a proportion of the additional funding that we've received from the DFE. It's a, you know, it is a much bigger pot of money that is being used across the system. And we're proposing that it's approximately, it's just over 200,000 pounds of it, is given directly to the special schools to support them with their national insurance increase. It's not by any means the whole, the whole amount of money.
Yeah, last point. I just still have a concern with the way that the funding is being identified to be used for national insurance increases, when I would like to see it being used for additional places, for example, in our specialist provision.
I guess one element of that, Andrew, I can, I take your point in the nuance of the way it can appear, but I guess the counter to that is that if we don't give that additional funding to special schools in that way, then their cost pressures on delivering the places we're asking them to deliver means that they haven't got the capacity to do it. So, we can badge it in a different way, but we still need to give some additional funding to the special schools in order them to cover their cost base. So, I know.
Yep, agreed completely.
Thanks, Alison.
Move on to Darren Woodward now, thank you.
Thank you, Alison. I've got a few questions, if I may. I want to come back on what Andrew said, because I've got a different point of view on what Andrew said, and I'll explain why in a second. But first of all, on page 6.34, where you reference about it would need, the only option for Suffolk would have is to reduce the amounts paid for individual children. Is there an intent to bring a paper to the forum about that?
No, no, not at this stage. And like I say, we will be working, we work now part of the Delivering Better Value Programme. So, I'm hoping that with work with them, we won't have to do. I think, and maybe I didn't word it particularly well in the paper, but what my concern, what the concern in this, for the service is that the only way we can see to do that would be if we're told we can't have a deficit moving forward, or if our deficit can't be managed, then we would have to look at the high needs top-up. And it's absolutely a last, you know, that would be the last thing we'd want to do because it puts too much pressure on the whole system.
I believe there's been a judicial review in a local authority in the country, though, that refused to reduce bandings. So, that might be quite a tricky thing to do.
Okay, yeah, I expect it will be. I mean, it wouldn't be something that could be decided without coming back to forum or with much wider conversations.
Thank you. So, the remainder of my questions are all around the additional high needs funding element. I fully understand the position Suffolk's in. We've referenced it on forum for easily two, three years now. However, I wanted to check, first of all, in point 41, it says it's been suggested that a proportion of the funding be used. Who made that suggestion, please? Was it the local authority?
It was at the High Needs Working Group. So, the High Needs Working Group is an external group. I chair it, but we have, Alison is part of that. We also have members from Schools Forum who are on that group.
Who made the suggestion, please, that the proportion of funding was used in this way?
So, the local authority took the suggestion to that group.
Thank you. That's what I wanted to check. Can I confirm that the grant that the local authorities received is, I think, 3 million?
I think it's right. Mike, I don't know if you have that.
There's no figures in the document, that's what I wanted to check.
Yeah, hello everyone. The overall amount that we got through the additional high needs grant was 3.4 million.
3.4, thank you. And what proportion of that money is then going to be given to pay the NI?
So, we're proposing 220,000.
So, that's about 5%, 6%, 7% maybe? Yeah, that seems about right. I'm not aware of any grant that's gone to mainstream schools from the government where the local authorities kept back 93% ever, or anything like that. And it's really clear in the, for the supplementary grant, so this kind of maybe disagrees with what Andrew was saying, that supplementary grant's really clear that it was to, not just to pay for the NI increases, but it was to support schools with cost pressures. And if we only give 7% of that money, where all the mainstream schools got the full grant, nothing was taken from them, then we aren't in any way addressing the cost pressures of the schools themselves, the things that cost to run the schools, not just the NI. I'm fairly confident that an awful lot of local authorities are giving an awful lot more than 93%, more than 7% of that grant. Many of them are transferring the whole amount of the money to the special schools. So, it doesn't seem right that we're advocating to fill a gap that's not our fault. I get that. I get the funding, how the funding is set up. But it shouldn't be that we give only 7% to the special schools and prues, when mainstream schools got 100% of the funding, and keep back 93% to plug a gap that isn't our fault. I get that, but that's not what this money was intended really to do. I get the discretion bit the local authority says, but I can't in any way support keeping back 93% from a grant to the special schools and prues. That's not right.
Yeah, I see your point. I mean, the guidance from the DFE was very vague about how the funding should be used. We are using it, I mean, it's being completely 100% spent on high needs funding. You know, there is no, it's going directly to all of our providers, is ensuring that we can continue to spend, pay the high needs funding at the level that we do at the moment. We, so I don't know what all other local authorities have done. I know others have done similar to this, others have done more, others have done less. The DFE are looking at putting much more tighter guidelines around it for 23/24, because there has been, obviously, a lot of letters have gone back to the DFE and information about how unhappy the system is about the way that this funding was passported, how it was worded, how it was badged. When we've had conversations with the DFE, and we have had many conversations with our contacts at the DFE, you know, they have said that it is to ensure that local authorities don't fall into further deficit and can support in paying their high needs top-up funding, which is obviously what we're doing as a local authority.
Gemma, doesn't the guidance say not to use the NI calculation, though?
Not to use the NI calculation?
Yeah, they do not recommend using the NI calculation to work out the way you have.
That's not my understanding, so I apologize. I mean, what we've done is looked at what we felt the biggest pressure on the special the biggest pressure on the special schools and prues were, and that was the increase of 1.25% on national insurance. Hence why we've proposed that we passport some of the money over in that manner.
It, it's a very small proportion. So maybe with having Michael on the call might help. But with this, with the supplementary grant that went to mainstream schools, do we have any indication, Michael, of what proportion of that grant was needed for the NI increases? And what proportion therefore has gone to the mainstream schools to manage other cost pressures? Which if Suffolk, if, if Forum chooses today to only give seven percent of that grant to special schools and prues for the NI and that's it, doesn't, it's not recognizing the cost pressures. Do we know what the split typically of the mainstream schools was NI to non, Michael?
I, I know there wasn't any, any sort of information given on any split on, on NI. Obviously, the supplementary grant was for increases in national insurance, pay increases. We had the teacher pension and teacher pay mainstreamed in, and we know that that potentially didn't cover all of those increases in the schools block funding as well. But I, I think, you know, I, I think that the differences between the supplementary grants were quite, were quite vast. There is lots of information on the school side of things. There was some rates given. There was some, you know, the rates given on free school meals. So it's very clear. But, you know, just to sort of back, you know, it's been very difficult for Gemma, but just to back up Gemma, we've had this 3.4 million in. And it was a case of here you go, here's 3.4 million, off you go, you know. And, and as Gemma said, local authorities are doing varying things on, on to pass this across. And this was just a way to, I think, to represent that, you know, there are going to be, be some cost pressures on the increase in NI. And it was just a, a way of getting some money directly across to prues and special schools. But the remaining, the remaining element of that additional funding is still being used to support schools, specialist provision within the high nee- high needs block.
Gemma, I know, I, I didn't, I wasn't able to attend that High Needs Working Group meeting, but I know the, the reason for having that as a subgroup to Schools Forum is so that you can have a broad representation on that group from special schools, alternative provision, prues, as well as mainstream representation. So they can get into the nitty gritty of high needs funding and how best to use the funding. So at that meeting, were any of the special schools, prues, alternative provision representatives, were they advocating for a different approach? Or could they recognise that your proposal to use some of the funding in order to offset the, the high cost there is in, in meeting the needs across all the bandings? Was that an approach that they were content with? Or were there some who were not content with that?
There were some that were not content with that. Obviously, it was a, it was an interesting conversation in that we all listened to everybody's views. And I then spoke about where the local authority sat on the, on the position. And it, yeah, it did go backwards and forwards between many of us beyond the meeting. Everybody copied in obviously, but there was some email exchanges as well beyond the meeting. But the, 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 the overall position was that this was at least, this would be a, a move in the right direction for the use of this funding for this financial year, while the DFE become much more clearer about what, if they want it spent differently in future years.
Okay, well, I won't take up any more time except to say that I think it's absolutely wrong to keep 93% that way, that seven percent is not sufficient to special schools and prues to recognise the cost pressures beyond NI. I'm, I'm really disappointed if that's what the decision that Forum takes today. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. And, and, you know, it, this, the reason of having conversations like this is to hear everybody's views. But I guess as a forum, we have to recognise there's no easy decisions at the moment. And if additional funding was instead diverted to the, to the special schools as you advocate, then we would be closer to having to review the banding levels because we're, we're just in a position where if additional funding is coming in for high needs, that we have to look at the, where we use that high needs funding across the board, not just for, for specific targeted parts of, of the high needs education settings and special schools that you're advocating for in particular, even though I recognise what pressure they're under as, as well as the whole of the high needs block scenario. So thank you for that. I'll move on to Gemma Andrews.
Just to add, it would be specials and prues.
Yes, yeah, sorry, I'm being generic here, but yes, specials and prues, yes. Thank you. Gemma Andrews, I'll come to you next for your question. Thank you.
Thank you. Gemma, on table three, on page three, you've told us the percentage increase in the number of placements. It would be really useful to know what the capacity is in those settings as well, so that we can see that where we've increased capacity or where we've not met capacity in those settings. That's my first question.
Yeah, no, obviously that I can do that, Gemma. That's absolutely fine. I can take that as an action to, to, to do that and share with Forum.
Thank you. And then I'm jumping to table five. I'm really interested in the number of children in, that are in receipt of high needs funding in our mainstream schools. And that that is more than half, and more than double the, the children, sorry, over half of the children in the whole of Suffolk that are receiving it. And if we include specialist units as they are, mainstream settings, if we add that, that's even higher. So I wondered, is that a national trend? Are we following the national trend that the majority of children who have high needs funding are in mainstream? And, and how does that compare with, with other local authorities? And what are they doing about that?
I think, I believe it does follow national trends, Gemma, but I'd need to look at the data in a little bit more detail. I haven't done, I've got that for this meeting. But again, if, if we, if I take that as an action, then I can make sure I come back to Forum with an answer on that.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Gemma.
Karen Lodge, you're next. Thank you.
Good morning. Hello, Gemma. I just wanted to make some comments about the funding. I'm representing pupil referral units. And we're grateful for money that will be coming in. I wasn't part of any discussion, so I wasn't aware of the, the sort of arguments for and against. But obviously any money, but obviously comments about whether this should be, more of this percentage should be given to prues and special schools is, I think, an important discussion point. However, what I wanted to say really was that we are seeing an increase in demand and mainstream schools are at the moment holding a lot of demand, particularly early years, and seeing increase in permanent exclusions. And I'm wondering whether this funding should be helped, used to help create places temporarily. Some of these situations are no doubt the result of COVID. And we have to be aware that many, many children are coming into school unable to cope. So the early years particularly, and whether some of this money might be used to alleviate this very, very serious problem.
So we, we are, so we're currently going through the process of updating the sense efficiency plan, Karen, which is looking at where we're seeing our most, the, the most demand, where we're seeing an increase in demand, where the pressures are coming in on the system currently and, and across the next three years. So if that, that will identify those, those, the types of things that you've, you've spoken about. And then obviously will give us a, a way forward of how we address those. And also look at where funding in the future currently and in the future needs to be directed to ensure that we're meeting the needs across the system. You know, at the moment, we have earmarked where we think the spend will be, and that's in the table on the paper. That will shift as we learn more about what is needed and the, the demand in the system. So that will definitely be taken into consideration. This funding, the, so what we want to do with this funding is say, we want to specifically give an amount to the schools, the special schools and the prues. And then the other, the funding will be used for high needs, top up high needs funding where it is needed across the system. And that's the process that Suffolk want to follow for, especially particularly as would now whilst we're doing the sense efficiency work.
Okay, I'm just to really follow up on, on what one of the other speakers has said is that, you know, this is quite a low percentage of this amount of money. And maybe doesn't feel very transparent at the moment. So it would be really good to know the exact percentage of money and what, you know, what the other money is specifically going to be used for. And is it limited to, to the high needs block? And is, is there any opportunity to adjust that percentage as a result of forum discussion?
I think it would depend on the vote, Alison, that's taking place later.
I guess it would be helpful, Gemma. I think we can certainly confirm that all of that funding will be used for high needs.
All of it, absolutely, 100%.
We can guarantee that all of that funding will be used for high needs. It's just a case of, as, as Gemma's tried to say so far, if I've got this right, is that you just want to direct the funding to where you can see the greatest need is and where the greatest gaps are at the moment? Would that be?
Absolutely. And to, so, so that we're not forced to, I mean, if we, if we, if we had to report an additional three million pounds overspent, if that money wasn't being used to support high needs funding across the system, if we had to report another three million, we would have to look at the whole system. Yes, it would have to come back to Forum, and that question was asked of me earlier. Would it mean a change to the top up bands? It would mean a change to the system. We, we can't, we couldn't passport 100% of that money and not be in a position where we would have to return to Forum to say, how do we save three million pounds? And, and, and we are still, as was mentioned earlier, we are so unfairly funded that even with the additional funding, it still doesn't bring us in line with, with our statistical neighbours. So it's, it's, it's a very, I do understand everything everybody said this morning. I just want to reassure everybody, but 100% of that funding is being used for high needs funding. It's for top ups, it's for additional places, it's to ensure we can take some of the pressure off the mainstream schools. It means that we can deliver more specialist units, which have already started growing in Suffolk, but are bringing such good quality provision to children who need it. And that relieves the pressure on the special schools. So we've got a model where we're looking at supporting mainstream schools, relieving the pressure from special schools and providing education that's suitable. And we can do more of that if we, you know, if, if we can use 100% of that funding for, for that purpose.
And I think that's where the knowledge of the High Needs Working Group comes in, doesn't it, Gemma? In that, that they've, over a number of years, built up a body of knowledge that has enabled them to appreciate that, that the checks and balances and that we can't end up with a win-win situation with the financial position we're in, that it's always a case of what, what is the best worst case scenario that we can work towards?
Yeah, and there is representation on that of, of both special schools, prues, mainstream schools. We've got CEOs of, of, you know, there, there is a wide range of people on that group who are able to, to bring their views and the views of their, the, 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 the providers that they are representing. So that's what we try and do with the High Needs Working Group.
Thank you, Gemma.
Thank you.
I don't see any questions so far, so I'll hand back to you to continue to present on the rest of the paper. Thank you, Gemma.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, just bear with me. I just need to get the paper back up again. Okay, so the third thing that I wanted to speak to you all about was the Delivering Better Value. So Delivering Better Value is a support package that the DFE have put in place for a number of local authorities. In fact, I think it's 55 local authorities that will be involved in the Delivering Better Value programme. There'll be three tranches of the programme, and those tranches will run over the next 18 months. Suffolk, I don't know which one of those tranches we're in yet. We, Alan Cadso and I attended a meeting on Monday where we met our delivery partners. And they are a partnership between Sipfa and Newton. So they'll be working with us to look at how we can, what we need to do across Suffolk to improve our, our services, look at how we can potentially make sure that we're, we're, we're doing what we should with, with the funding that we have received. The face-to-face meetings will start, we commence in the 18th of July. And basically, and what they'll be doing is they'll be looking to improve outcomes for children and young people, work with us to co-design an approach and, and what that will look like moving forward. They'll use evidence-led diagnostics, and they'll look to develop and share approaches across the whole programme. Like I say, there's 55 local authorities attending. And we were all invited to the virtual meeting on Monday where we were given much more detail about what will be going on. There's two phases to the programme. The first phase will be looking at, so there'll be a small grant in order to support data collection and assurance, so we can provide them everything they need in order to them to start the work that they need to do with us. Then they said it would be a tailored and flexible project with management support through the delivery partner, who I mentioned is Newton and Sipfa. It worked alongside our DFE send advisor and obviously involve key stakeholders. And then there'll be a phase two of the programme where there'll be an implementation of the action plan that has been produced as part of phase one. So I think that's everything I know at the moment on Delivering Better Value. Like I say, we're, we're waiting for them to get, I think the initial meetings are potentially with the Director of Children's Services. But obviously myself and Alan Cadso will be heavily involved in, in what happens moving forward. And I'll come back to Forum with more information about that as we have it. Like I said, this is all I've got at the moment because we've just had that very first, it was only 45 minutes on Monday afternoon. So once we know more, obviously, I'll bring that back to Forum. Thanks, Alison.
Thank you, Gemma. Does anybody have any other questions or points they'd like to raise before we move to the first vote? I can't see any hands going up.
I think there's a question there from Andrew.
Ah, I wasn't in the chat. I was looking for hands up. Thank you. Switch from one to the other. You're always in the wrong place.
That's the thing, always looking at the wrong screen.
Andrew, over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison. Just looking at further information, I don't feel I'm in a position to be able to vote on this at this time. I need to go and look at the additional information to identify what the requirement of the grant is.
Thank you, Andrew. How, how much time have we got for this, Gemma? Do, how quickly do you need an answer? Do, do we need to proceed today?
The funding is, you know, the money will be paid for this financial year. And it will be paid when, once his agree, you know, whether or not, when, when an agreement is reached, then the funding will be passported to the schools and the prues.
Can I get any other views as to whether, I, I just want to see whether, whether that's just, you know, if it's only one person who doesn't feel that they feel able to move to a vote today, then that's one scenario. But if there's lots of people who feel like they need more information before we can move to a vote, then, then that puts a different picture, paints a different picture. Rowena.
Good morning. I'm just listening to everything and I still feel that I lack a little bit of clarity about where everything's going. I completely accept that it's all going to come into the special schools and the prues, but I think I'm probably with Andrew that I'd like a little bit more clarity about how that might proceed, I guess. So if it's possible for that, I, I, I'm probably in that position as well, I would have said.
Thank you. So if we were to have to delay the vote on this till the October meeting, Gemma? Mike, I, I'm looking to both of you for a bit of a steer on this. Does, does that fit with?
Yeah, that's, that's fine. I think as Gemma said, you know, I, I think if, you know, people can't make a decision today, then we can, we can take that away, look into it. We've got the High Needs Working Group to still look into things as well. And, you know, we'd ensure we'll get some funding out in this financial year.
Thanks, Mike. Alan?
Just can we, can we be clear about exactly what people want clarity on? Because I don't want Gemma to go, I, I think it'd be good to be more precise about that. And just say it, it's really the point that 100% of the money is going to children. None of it has been kept back, so slightly, you know, the implication, we're, we're keeping, we're not keeping any of the money.
Yes, indeed. It is all going to be spent on high needs. And if, if more of it is diverted to the special schools and prues, that then more pressure on the deficit we've got to meet the needs of everybody else who are delivering same to children. So Rowena, I think your hand was first back up. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison. I think I was just thinking about Alan's question about the clarity. I think for me, what it's about is that the, the impact of the decisions moving forward is, is in my mind, but also there's 93% that we know is coming back into the schools, but where is that going? And is there going to be a, a future? So I'm in a mainstream secondary setting. Is there a future where I need to be worried about the high need bands coming down, for example? So it's, it's kind of that, for me, it's a, a little bit more clarity. I don't mean, you know, penny for penny, but just a bit more clarity about where proportions of that money looks to be going, so that we can be sure that the student, well, all of our children are getting what they need and that we're trying to reduce the pressures that are across the system and, you know, in the, in the specialist settings and the mainstream settings and those sorts of things. I, I don't know if that's helpful or not in terms of what I was thinking about in, in clarity. So it's not penny for penny clarity. It's just more, what's the, the longer term impact about where that money potentially goes now, moving forward as well.
Thank you, Rowena. Darren?
Thank you. Just to come back on what Alan just said.
Thank you. Just to come back on what Alan just said. Alan, I don't think it's about me saying you're keeping it back in that sense. What I'm saying is that seven percent is highly insufficient to give to the specials and prus to meet cost pressures. I don't think we should be proportioning such a low amount. It would be very helpful to know what local authorities in our area are also doing. So we've got a fair comparison to see Gemma reference some local authorities to doing less. So it'd be really good to know who those local authorities are, are going less than seven percent. And likewise, which local authorities are giving fifty percent, seventy percent, eighty percent? So that we've, we've got more detail and transparency around the information, please.
And, and I can see where you're coming from on that point Darren, except for the fact that we know all of our neighbours, whether, whether they're local geographic neighbours or our statistical neighbours from around the country all have far higher same funding than us in the first place. So they don't have the same pressures on the whole high needs block funding that we do in Suffolk, which is why we often have to make much more challenging decisions than they do. So my suggestion Gemma is that you call another meeting of the High Needs Working Group. You have a conversation with them about, and get particular views from the special and pru representatives about what they feel their cost pressures look like, that they feel that this funding pot could, could be asked to contribute to, that they don't feel that they can meet from their current funding. And then we have to look at the implications of that on how much is then potentially they wish to be, have for that, that then puts pressure off the rest of the deficit we've got that's growing for everyone else who have got increasing same pressures as well, but in a different way, in the way. And whether that does have an implication going forward that we can then tell forum that because of the trajectory of the deficit, that we're more likely than not, or whichever way around it is, to potentially have to revisit the, the bandings and the, and the way that we fund. So does, is that helpful or is there any other clarity that you would like?
From myself?
I'm asking Gemma, but.
No, that's fine Alison, that's great, thank you.
Ignore me.
So is that fine with everybody else? Or is there any, anything else that anybody else wants to mention that would help Gemma to know what she needs to go away and get information on to bring back in October? So Karen, you've put in the chat, can we vote on part of the funding being released to special schools and prus now with an update in October? So, so you're wondering whether we can vote on whether we agree the, the NI level. But then the question is that to go away and see whether whether there is sufficient evidence to show that a request should come back to forum for there to be additional money on top of the proposed two hundred and twenty thousand that should also go to special schools and prus.
Yes, that, that was my view because if we delay everything until October, it just feels nobody benefits at all. Clearly it's not going to go down. There may not be any change and special schools and prus need to be aware of that. But obviously there may be a discussion at the work, in the working party that makes a, a different arrangement, in which case more money will be released to them. But yeah, it just makes, makes sense to separate those two out rather than why.
I can follow your thinking Karen, because if Schools Forum today now vote to say that they don't even think that there should be the allocation of the two hundred and twenty thousand to cover the NI, then that gives a steer about Schools Forum thinking on on additional funding from, from that pot as well anyway. Okay, so I, I know the questions are pre-written for the voting system. So the, the question that will come up on the screen, if I just bring up my page again, is do you agree to move on the proposals to use the additional funding as described in Paper B before further guidance on the use of the funding is published? And we will add to the minutes that that question is specifically saying, do Schools Forum agree today that an initial tranche that would cover the NI cost for specials and prus is what we are voting on? And that we will bring back another paper to the October meeting to consider whether or not we vote on an additional tranche of funding for special schools and prus from this grant funding pot. Does that sound okay? Can anybody, I'm sent to check me, but is everybody happy if we were to minute it like that?
That would seem fair and Alison, thank you.
Okay, so Barbara, are you in charge of the, the voting this morning? In which case, could you put that question up on the screen and we all know what that is for? Okay, so the poll should now be appearing in your chat. So voting members, if you could vote now please. So thank you, everybody has voted. So we've got eighty one percent in favour. Now, we now got eighty three percent in favour and sixteen percent against of the twelve responses. So that vote is passed. So it's agreed that that initial tranche of funding for special schools and prus to cover their NI costs has been agreed by Schools Forum on the basis that there will be another paper coming to the October meeting. Having had a, a, a meeting of the High Needs Working Group to consider proposals put forward by special schools and prus about what additional cost pressures they have that they are going to request Schools Forum to consider in October. Okay, thank you. Right. Shall we pause and not do the second question about it being an annual contribution and save that one for October would be my proposal? When we can then do it as a broader question Gemma?
Yeah, I think things have moved on probably since the original request to put that second question in Alison, because the DFE are looking at putting in much stricter guidelines about what this, how this funding is spent. So that might supersede that question anyway. But we haven't got that yet.
Super. All right. So is there anything else that we need to ask Gemma today? Or have we concluded this paper now? Is everybody satisfied with that? Super. Okay. Thanks very much for your time today Gemma.
Thank you everybody.
Okay, so next on the agenda is a DSG spend twenty twenty one, twenty two and the twenty two, twenty three forecast. So I'll hand over to Mike Quinton for that, thank you.
Good morning everybody. And so I'm presenting this paper today. Sonia had a difficult choice of either a four week trip to Italy or present this paper, so she's not here today. So Gemma's touched on a lot of the, the information in this paper on the DSG outcome for twenty one, twenty two and what we're looking at for twenty two, twenty three. So as you can see on page two, table one, so overall for last year, we had a five point two, five oh million overspend on our DSG. So the majority of this was the high needs block, which Gemma has already identified. We did have some, say, an underspend on the regu, the regulatory and other statutory duties line. This is because we had an increase in the allocation last year. But we've decided to, to use some of those underspends and, and savings on the CSSB, CSSB element, which is the twenty percent reduction that we're seeing year on year. So that'll be used for that. And we also had an underspend on the early years block. A lot of you may not know this, but the, the, the early years block is, is funded on actual uptake in, in places. So the nine hundred and eighteen thousand pound underspend really isn't a real nine hundred and eighteen thousand pound underspend because we get adjustments in the following year. So we're just waiting on that in July, at the end of July actually, to see what the actual allocation was for twenty one, twenty two. But because there was a massive increase in January twenty two on the uptake of early years places, especially on the three and four year olds. And there was a seventeen percent increase on the January twenty one census because parents obviously more confident in, in the COVID situation at the moment and, and parents are actually going back into the office as well. So we did see a massive increase there. So we did put a reserve movement in of two point one million because that's what we think the adjustment will be. So, so overall for twenty one, twenty two, we think the allocation for early years is going to be around thirty eight million mark. But because the way the funding works, they are estimates. And we do find that we often have a surplus for, for early years. So we'll just wait to see what happens and then myself, Sonia and Christina can have a look at what that means for our early years providers and we can have another discussion on how we can possibly divert some of that surplus out to our providers again. We also had some small underspends on rates and recoupment. So this is where academy conversions take place and the ESFA recoup rates based on any point of the year. But as we often find, the rates that were actually provided for are different from what we're, what we're actually charged for. So there's a slight discrepancy there. And then on the growth funds, we did have a, an underspend last year on, on growth. This was because we had a lot of schools that just entered their final year of, of growing in effect. So we did make a an underspend there. But as we know, moving forward, we've got lots of new schools, we've got lots of housing development. So we think in, in the future, the growth will be near, near or overspend against that one point seven, eight million. And just looking at the growth for this year, we are very close to that already with new schools in the pipeline and, and lots of, lots of growth in some of our secondary and, and primary schools as well. So looking forward to two thousand and twenty two, twenty three, again, Gemma's touched on this, but as we're so early in the new financial year and the only overspend that we're actually reporting at the moment is on the, the high news block. And as Gemma said, she thinks that's increased to more five point five million rather than the five point two million. And then just again, we've touched on this, I think Andrew touched on it and we've had conversations with him over the past couple of months, but this in table five and table six, it's just again to highlight that Suffolk is really, really underfunded compared to its regional, regional neighbours. And table six, you can see the element of the historical funding. So Norfolk spent lots of money in two thousand seventeen, eighteen, whereas we were trying to sort of, you know, do as best we can and try to keep within the, the budget allocated to Suffolk. So I, I think we did really well in seventeen, eighteen, but it's obviously penalised as moving forward. And myself, Adrian, Alan, Sonia have gone back to the DFE to say we don't think that's an appropriate measure to allocate funding in twenty one, twenty two and twenty three, twenty four. It's, it's six years out of date, you know, it shouldn't happen. But as you can see, the difference between us and Norfolk, Norfolk have got very similar demographics to us in Suffolk. And they've just got more pupils. So that's why they do get a slight increase in, in funding there. But you know, overall, that, that difference that we can see between the two hundred and eighty seven pounds per pupil and the three hundred and seventy one, that's eight million pounds a year. So Gemma's paper wouldn't have even been a paper potentially if we're getting that sort of funding. So we wouldn't be reporting overspends of seven, seven billion and five billion. We'd be reporting sort of maybe a balanced budget. So I think it's just important to keep highlighting that. We have consistent conversations with various people and I know Rachel's not here today, but she's having those conversations with MPs as we speak. Alison, that's it for that paper.
Thanks Mike. Gemma has a question, Gemma Andrews, thank you.
Hello, thank you. I, I might be asking a really stupid question, but I feel if I don't ask it, I won't understand. In point eighteen on page five, you talk about the designated high needs block being calculated on numbers of pupils in special schools.
Yeah.
And so I, my question is, if, if it's just calculated on the numbers of pupils in special schools, obviously with those other factors, is it our lack of special schools?
You've gone on Gemma, we've lost you.
Oh. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, you're back. And I, I just wonder, you know, when I look at the Norfolk offer, there are far more special schools. So are they attracting more money because they have more special schools? Do we have to compete, I suppose?
It is a good question. So there is a formula for the high needs block. So there's, as you know, for our mainstream schools, we have the ORPU, which is the main sort of factor to get the funding out to schools. So there's a similar thing within the high needs block. So we have a, a basic entitlement factor which is paid for all of the commissioned places that we have in our special schools. And so that would, it doesn't have an impact because then you've got all of the other demographic stuff as well, which is paid across. So you've got the ADACHI, you've got the, you've got the, the health conditions of pupils. So you've got all of these other factors. So I completely understand what you're saying Gemma. I know that Norfolk do have more commissioned places. They've got a much bigger AP estate as well. So it's a contributing factor, but it, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that they're going to get loads more money. So there are other factors in, in place that allocates the funding through the high needs block.
Brilliant, thank you.
And that historic value has a bigger impact than a lot of the other factors, is that right to say Mike?
Yeah, it is, yeah, definitely. So, you know, that, that's about thirty percent of the, the total high needs blocks. It's a massive chunk and and to use that two, sort of two thousand seventeen, eighteen data, you know, why didn't they bring it forward and use twenty twenty one data where we were starting to overspend because of the, the demand? So, you know, the conversations that we continue to have.
Thanks Mike. Are there any other questions for Mike on this paper? Because it was just for information. We haven't got to make a decision on this paper today. Gemma, your hand is still up, is that legacy hand?
Yes, sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mike, you're staying with us because you're now going to introduce Paper D, the Falling Rolls Fund paper, thank you.
Yes. So Forum's being asked to decide today if it would be agreeable to amend our current growth policy to include a falling roles, roles policy. So we did discuss this, I think, last autumn. Just about, we're, we're having a few schools now that are getting in touch with us just to say that they're potentially having some sort of short-term issues where their, their pupil numbers are, are falling. And, you know, what is there to support those schools? And we are permitted to have a falling rolls fund, but we've never had one in Suffolk. So, you know, we are looking to, to implement something. And, and just to be clear with this fund, it's about supporting schools in the short term. So this is where there's a, a known drop in pupil numbers for whatever reason. But we do know that the pupil numbers will stabilise and start to get back to sort of the pre-drop levels. And so this is a short-term temporary measure to support those schools. So they don't have to do anything too drastic, like make redundancies or change the classing structure. And, you know, if schools are seeing pupil numbers drop over a longer term, then that's where potentially they need to do something different, but still have those conversations with the local authority. And so hopefully you've all read the report. I won't go over the, the main body of the report because I think we did last time. And obviously we know that there are some reductions in primary age pupils coming into the system. And they're saying that's the reason why we're looking at this falling rolls fund. The falling rolls fund needs to be set on some some certain criteria, which is set by the ESFA. And some of those are listed on page three under point sixteen. So what we had to go away and do is come up with some proposed criteria based on what the ESFA set and also come up with a method just to allocate some funding. So on page, we're on page four. And I have set out a method of attempting to distribute funding to support schools with falling rolls. We came up with this method just to make it as affordable as possible. And we want to support, we want to support schools that are going through these short-term pupil number drops. And we want to support a minority of schools going through these pupil number drops. It's not about supporting sort of ten, fifteen, twenty schools. It's about these really sort of these schools that are having these dips in pupil numbers. And what we're finding i- is these schools that are in often sort of more rural areas as well. And we're, we're finding that those schools, it's important to, to support those schools to keep them open. It's, it's important for the, the community. And I think Rachel, who's not here today, I think she sort of completely understood that and, and agreed that, you know, we should be looking to support those schools. So there is a method there. And what that method would do is, is propose to put about two hundred thousand pounds into the pot. I'm saying it's two hundred thousand pounds, but when looking at some of the modelling that I did, and we did have a few academies in there and, and obviously I haven't got access to academy reserve information. So, you know, potentially next year, that amount of money that would be paid out through this method could be less than that. And what we would, would propose to, to do with the, any underspend is we put it back into the schools block. So just on that two hundred thousand pound element. So, you know, it, it's an amount we think it's, it's useful to have. And hopefully you will support that and we can look to implement it in twenty three, twenty four.
Thanks Mike. Does anybody have any questions for Mike before we go to the vote on this paper? No, no questions coming forward. Okay then Barbara, could you put the question up please? Which is, do you agree that it would be appropriate to amend Suffolk's growth policy? Which is, do you agree that it would be appropriate to amend Suffolk's growth policy to include a falling rolls fund from 23, 24? Following on from our earlier discussions. So could voting members vote now, please? I'm sticking up. I think there's a couple more people who can still vote. Super. Okay, so that vote has been passed. A hundred percent voted in favour and there are no people voting against that proposal. So thank you very much. That has been agreed. Okay, thanks so much, Mike.
No, that's fine. And I'll just add, you know, once, once we've got that information on any schools that potentially could be going through falling rolls, we'll report that back to the forum. So we've got that transparency about, you know, how much we're going to be spending on that.
Super. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll now move on to paper E, which is the Schools Forum Constitution and Terms of Reference. And I'll hand over to Adrian All for this paper. Thank you.
Good morning, colleagues. Thank you, Alison. I'm just checking, people can hear me? Can you hear me okay, Alison? Colleagues, hopefully this is a fairly straightforward paper. It felt timely to commit the constitution in terms of reference to paper. The old copy was getting very, very aged. The background to the paper that you have is that it takes into consideration the various amendments that the Department for Education have made over the past two to three years. And also puts it, I hope, into a fairly readable and straightforward format. I also did a piece of work as part of my work with a group of officers across the country who were also updating their Schools Forum Terms of Reference. So this, you know, has been tested against some of those. There's two or three points I just wanted to highlight. I'm not going to go through it all because I'm sure people will have read, will have read it. One of the things that can be a challenge for any forum and we'll notice it ourselves today is that you know, people are often extremely busy and sometimes can't make the meeting. And a feature that others are using that I would propose that that we might do is that forum members identify a formal substitute, whichever part of the system they're from. And that the substitute may occasionally attend as a, as an observer. So that if someone isn't able to make it to forum, particularly as we've got some, you know, as we've seen today, some some complex issues where there may be differing views, having enough people at forum becomes really important. And although we're core it today, we are only just core it. So I'd encourage people to think about that. I'm going to, as the responsible officer for forum, write to all forum members to encourage the identification of a formal substitute. And I've written a short section about that into the, into the document. And I guess the only other thing is checking in in the vote, two, two elements to the vote. One is are people happy to adopt this and also happy to have a three year review period? My suspicion is we may see some DFE forum changes coming in the next few years. So it's good to, to, to review this perhaps a bit more frequently than we have done today. So I'll stop there. Very happy to, to take questions on this.
Thanks very much, Adrian. Does anybody have any questions for Adrian before we move to voting on the paper? No? Okay, so Barbara, if we could have the first question, please, which is, do you agree to adopt the proposed constitution set out in the report? So if voting members could vote now, please. Results are coming in. One more can vote, they wish, but of those who voted a hundred percent have voted in favour and none against. Thank you. So we can have the second question. Do you agree to a three year review period for Forum's constitution? Oh, Tweezy, you're doing the poll, not Barbara, sorry. Thank you. Again, the vote is a hundred percent in favour and none against. Thank you all very much for that.
Thanks very much, colleagues.
Super. Okay, so we can now move on to paper G, which is the Primary Head Teachers Association Request. Jill Mitchell, I'll hand over to you to present this paper. Thank you.
Hello, good morning, morning Forum. Thank you for considering this paper, paper G. It was for me and Wendy James to present. Wendy is unable to be here this morning, so it's for me to present and I'm happy to to take questions. So the Suffolk Primary Heads Association was originally on a subscription basis many years ago. It was set up to represent all the head teachers in Suffolk. Eventually, the subscriptions were stopped and the LA kindly funded this through School Forum and we received a funding of around 30,000 to enable the association to carry on. Now, due to budget constraints, the funding was stopped and we've been managing it without the funding for the last couple of years. But we're requesting that the funding be reinstated through Forum today or partially, partially reinstated if necessary. We've listed on the paper many of the benefits of the Suffolk Primary Heads Association, especially in the last few years with the pandemic, being able to liaise with the local authority and provide heads with a touchstone and the networking that they need to get through and to be able to work with new heads so that there's less isolation. We're requesting the 30,000, which I have as a breakdown, should any of the forum members want to to know exactly what that 30,000 represents. But basically, it's an executive officer who works 16 hours a week, four weeks per month, and an executive assistant and finance officer with various other small amounts after that. So I don't know whether anybody has any, any questions about the paper or the benefits of SPA, really?
Thank you for presenting that, Jill. Andrew, you have the first question. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison. Morning, Jill. Can I ask a couple of questions? So the first question is in terms of the representation and what that representation is for. So SPA are representative of all primary heads. Who are they representing to? The second question is about the other organisations that are similar or representing people and whether they receive a similar allocation of funding. So I'm thinking there particularly SASH, does SASH receive an element of funding? Is there an organisation of AP specialist provision, SEND provision that access funding as well? So in terms of equality, can you give me a picture on that and talk about the representation, please?
The representation is to, with the local authority in the main and with each other. So we meet regularly or the executive board and executive officer meet regularly with the local authority and have done on a weekly basis through the pandemic. And that's been a really useful touchstone for the local authority to find out what was out there. And I know the local authority have used SPA in that way over the last couple of years. And I mean, it represents each other in that it's, it's a group of people. And if there are issues, they go to the executive officer and it's discussed and any support that can be shared by the members for the members, it's for each other. In terms of what sort of funding the others get, I'm not sure. I don't know. I don't think SASH get the same funding as, as we do. I think they share the executive officer amongst them. But as primary heads, we don't have the capacity to do that.
Adrian, thank you for that point. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy, happy to come in and try and answer the question, Andrew, from a historic perspective. Jill's quite right. In the past, both the Suffolk Association of Secondary Heads, jointly with the Suffolk Primary Heads Association, made recommend or made an approach to Schools Forum. I was going to say five or six years ago, but time, time is, it's much longer. It's before, it's before my direct time in Forum. And there was an agreement that an element of the Central School Service Block would be used for both SASH and SPA. And that all predates the existence of SEON. And at the time, there were, there was quite a debate at the forum meeting, I'm led to believe. And an agreement was made to put some funding for both SASH and SPA with an emphasis that SASH and SPA also would be representing special school and pro heads as well, depending on whichever phase they, they were part of. As the Central School Service Block was progressively reduced, and we know when we've discussed it for them on a number of occasions, the government's intention to remove the historic element and we're on a, a sort of a reducing amount. A working group around that, I wasn't part of the working group. Sonia Harbin chaired it. A working group with reluctance and regret decided, given the, the challenges faced by a range of budgets, that that, that funding couldn't, could no longer be used for the the Heads Association. And my understanding is it wasn't a cliff edge of drop in funding. It was a a reduction in 50% in one year and then a complete reduction the following year for both SASH and SPA to try and support perhaps the subscription element. My understanding is that SASH continued a subscription element, even when it was receiving funding through the Central School Service Block, but that wasn't possible with the primary heads. I think that's my understanding. I'm just going to check in with Michael because you may have been involved or Sonia may have briefed you Michael on the, on the CSSB discussions. Maybe not, but I just, I just do that. I think that's, I hope that gives a bit of history.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's, that's right, Adrian, what you just said, yeah.
Thank you both for that. Any other questions? No other questions? Okay, are we happy to move forward to the vote on this paper then, please? So the question for this one, first of all, is do you agree to fund the running costs of the Suffolk Primary Heads Association at 30,000 pounds per annum? Just waiting for, my screen's being a bit slow. I don't know if anybody else is. Just waiting for other votes to come in. Anybody else wanting to vote? Okay, so the vote is in favour 75% and against 25%. So on that basis, it's been agreed. And the second question, Barbara, thank you. Do you agree to part fund to enable SPA to appoint an executive officer for 22, 23 and retain the current administrator? So eligible people can vote now, thank you. Okay, the responses to that are 63% against and 36% in favour. So that hasn't been gone through, that hasn't been passed. Okay, thank you very much, everybody, for your votes on, on that paper. Thank you, Jill, for attending today.
Does that mean that the funding is agreed then in full? Does it?
So it appears, well, the, the first was, did people agree to fund SPA at 30,000 per annum, which was agreed. But the second question was, did they agree to do part funding for the current financial year? And that wasn't agreed.
That was just the alternative option? The, the part funding one?
I, well.
Adrian can clarify that one, I'm not quite sure.
My, oh, let Adrian interpret.
Yeah, so I think the, the second vote was, if there was a no vote on the first one, was my understanding. From my reading of that, there was, there was an agreement to, to fund from, from resources, the Suffolk Primary Heads Association.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Thank you, Forum. I'll take that back. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jill. Okay, in my error, I jumped ahead too fast. Apologies to Christina Lewis. If we can now return to paper F, please, which is the Early Years Position Statement. Over to you, Christina.
Thank you, Alison. Good morning, everybody. I wanted to bring this paper today just to remind you all of the unique pressures that the early years and childcare sector are dealing with. It sounds a very, very familiar story to other speakers this morning already. And similarly, Suffolk is very underfunded in early years compared to other local authorities. I have got colleagues, we do have colleagues on Schools Forum who represent early years. And so if they, if you were interested, they could tell you more how it is on the ground for them. I'm giving an overview from the local authority's view. As you've heard from Mike Quinton this morning, our take up is really accelerating of the funded entitlements. So we have plenty of children and lots of our providers are reporting they are incredibly busy this term. And normally September is a quiet term, but they are looking quite full in September as well. So that is a joyous thing. So we have plenty of children wanting to access their funded entitlement. But at the same time, we have early years provision closing. And some of it is closing due to the financial difficulties. And I've outlined in the paper what some of those in particular are. And also what is quite new, and this is a national issue, not a Suffolk issue, is an inability to recruit. Just like some other sectors, you hear a lot on the news about the care sector being in a recruitment crisis. Early years and childcare is no different. Our providers can't recruit the right level of people that they need. They can't even get people applying for jobs that they're advertising. So we're having places close who have plenty of children. And they're not saying it's because of the finances, although they are a challenge. It's because they cannot recruit to maintain the level of service. This, of course, is very stressful for our providers. It's very challenging for parents and becoming increasingly so to find a place. And it threatens the local authority's ability to meet our statutory sufficiency duty. I wanted to tell you all this because it also ties in with something that Gemma was saying earlier in that we're also struggling to meet the increasing levels of children with additional needs that I'm, that we're finding are coming through, which again is what's been reported earlier. And that is predominantly because whilst providers want to provide for all children, when they need additional resource to be able to support a child with additional needs, they can't recruit them. So it's not that they're not willing, it's that they can't bring the staff in to do the job that needs to be done. So this is a real crisis point for early years at the moment. I don't expect you to have any answers. We just wanted to make you aware of what we're facing. As Mike said as well, there may be a surplus in the early years block. We're hoping there will be, but we won't know yet. But when we do, we would hope to be able to pass that through in some way, which is only a sticking plaster, but it's a way that we think we will be able to help to make sure we get as much resource out there as we can. We are also working with colleges and with Job Centre Plus, et cetera, to try and address the recruitment issues. But that is going to be a longer term plan. It won't show quick results. So that was the information for today. I'm very happy if anyone has any questions, I can take them. But it was really just to give you a flavour of what it's like at the moment in early years and childcare.
Thank you, Christina. A couple of people have put their hands up. So I'll go to Amanda Havers first. Thank you.
Hello. As an early years provider, I would endorse what Christina has said. As forum members will know, I often advocate more money, more money please, more money being passed through, which I continue to do so. And obviously, we hope that there will be perhaps some underspend that can be distributed to us. But the recruitment and retention issues are unprecedented, I think, from our point of view. Having been in the sector for over 20 years, I haven't known this sort of issue before to this extent. And I've spoken to several providers who are already reducing the number of spaces that they have available to match the staffing levels they have or having to close rooms on an ad hoc or on a permanent basis. So it is a real issue which is going to have a knock on effect to other parts of not just early years, but passing through to schools, et cetera. So it is a very, very real issue for providers at the moment. So yes, I fully endorse what Christina has said.
Thank you, Amanda. It's a shame to hear it, but it's helpful to have the, the reflections of those of you on the front line that how different this is, a position this is. position this is compared, as you say, to across the last 20 years. Ruth Coleman, you had your hand up next, I think, thank you.
Thanks everybody, I, I also represent the early years sector and want to back up what my colleagues have just said, we're finding that recruitment is the worst it's ever been, adverts go out and absolutely no applications at all, so that then puts the ratios in the room under pressure, there's no flesh on the bones to cover sickness, and Covid numbers rising, so staff are exhausted because they're, they're working extremely hard under extremely difficult situations, our send numbers are through the roof, children who haven't been picked up or diagnosed during the Covid period are appearing in our two-year-old room with no support, and, and we have no staff to add additional support in the room, but also the impact of Covid on young children, those two-year-olds who were born during the first lockdown are now, now in our rooms, so the pressure on communication and language, personal, social and emotional, children are not toilet-trained, some children still haven't been weaned to, and they're eating processed food, so all the things that families would have had support with during the early years of their child's development that was lost in Covid, we are now picking up, and it's just really to make you all aware of the, the difficulties that are ongoing, and it's, it's not getting any easier.
Thank you Ruth, yeah, the, the impact that all of you across the early years sector have on school readiness, and so the impact that will follow some of those children right through their education experience is, is a great worry to hear. Gemma Andrews, you, you had your hand up as well, thank you.
Thank you, and my question is, are we ensuring that we're getting involved in the £180 million PBI projects that's talked about in the White Paper?
We're involved in anything we can be, we, we bring in as much funding and as much expertise as we can at any time, Suffolk again, used to get overlooked for these sorts of, for any initiatives from the DFE etcetera, but that has changed in recent years, and they do now come to us on a regular basis to be involved in anything and to pilot things for them, which we always strive to do, so yeah, any, anything that is available out there that is going to help us, we will get involved with it.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, a, any other thoughts or comments or queries for Christina while we have her here? It's a very challenging situation Christina, so we can only keep our fingers crossed that, that more people see a career in early years as something that they, they want to think about as we go forward, do, do we have much liaison for instance with the colleges because who run the, the early years courses for, for young people who might be thinking about apprenticeships or that sort of thing?
We're developing in that now, I'm working with my colleagues in the skills team, and we're working directly with some of the colleges, some are not engaging with us at the minute, some are, and we're working with them to develop their offer around early years provision to work in partnership, and also to help them with what their curriculum looks like so that we get, providers get coming out of college what they need, so to keep them abreast of what's needed in the sector, so we are fostering those relationships now with a hope of seeing a bit of a medium to long-term impact.
Yes, obviously that doesn't address the immediate need, but, but hopefully liaison like that will, will help in the future. Colin Shaw, you, you put your hand up, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I represent the post-16 sector, so Christine, I'd like to actually meet and catch up and put an offer forward to see how we can work much more closely together, we're starting to see an increase, I have put it in the chat, we're starting to see an increase in the number of young people who are interested in the sector, and that's at T levels as well, because you'll be aware that there's a new qualification at T levels for education and early years, so I think there's a real opportunity, and hopefully working together, we can address some of the problems you're seeing, and also that extends into the apprenticeships as well.
Thank you Colin, I really appreciate that, and I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you Colin, Gemma and Ruth, you still have hands up, is that a new point or is that legacy hands, please?
It's a new point for me, please, I just wanted to say that we've recruited two apprentices to start in September, and in a longer term, that is fantastic, but they can't be counted in ratio when they first start, so although it, it puts extra bodies in the room and the training is superb, and we hope to retain whilst they're apprentices until they reach a certain level, they don't take the pressure of having one to four for two-year-olds, and one to eight or one to 13 for three-year-olds.
Thank you Ruth, it's good to hear that you've got, you're involved in that longer-term solution, but yes, I acknowledge that it's not addressing your immediate issues, so thank you for giving us all a picture, those of you who've contributed to this item today, that's really helpful, thank you Christina.
Thank you.
Okay, on the agenda, Schools Forum vacancies is our next item, Adrian, are you picking that up?
Yeah, I, I'll pick that up, thank you Alison, very quick item colleagues, conscious of the time, just to let you know, there are three vacancies, these are academy vacancies, and longer-term members of forum will know that the local authority has run the election on behalf of, as a sort of neutral party, has run a, an election on behalf of the academy sector, but as there's been quite a change in, in membership over the last sort of two years, I felt it was important that we just check back in with the sector, if you were happy for the local authority to run the election, or whether the sector itself wanted to run the election, so just sort of welcome comment on that really, I didn't want to make assumptions.
Any academy representatives who would like to respond to that, thank you.
Thanks, thanks Darren, I mean, we, we didn't put a vote or anything in around it because it's been an informal arrangement, but if, if, if people just want to put in the chat a yes or a no, then we, we'll go ahead with, with that and get that in place, I'm not seeing any objections, we tried to make it easier for the sector by running it all, yeah, I think, I think we're getting, I think we're getting some, some support there, I guess if someone was, was not happy with that, we'd, we'd, we'd see it the other way, okay colleagues, thank you very much.
Thank you, we'll, we'll note that the, the local authority will support that election process for you then, thank you. Okay, I haven't been made aware in advance of any other business today, so moving on to the forward agenda, Mike or Adrian, did you want to cover anything for that, Sushi and Sonia who does that for us?
I, I, I'll just make a start on that, Michael may want to come in, obviously key things that will be coming up in the October meeting will be all the voting around the central school service block, we're bringing some slightly different proposals around that, obviously people will get a chance to see that in advance, there will also be some different issues around the de-delegation because of changes that the Department for Education have been made, and we'll get those papers out well in advance of the meeting so people can see them. Michael, from a finance perspective, is there anything I've missed on that, they're the two key ones that, that I'm aware of.
We'll have the, the budgets for, for next year, the school blocks budgets, so 22, 23, 24 should I say, and also maybe it might be useful just reporting back on some of the consultations that we're actually reporting back to the DFE on as well, on the national funding formula, so that just might be a useful thing to.
That's helpful, actually, very, very helpful suggestion, thank you.
There will be an updated high knees paper, but Gemma, I see.
Standing item. Yeah.
No, that was it Alison, just to say that I'll come back with the information that's been requested in this meeting.
Yeah, thank you, and, and Amanda's pointing the chat, there's a really important one, as Michael alluded to earlier, the, the figures we see around early years that looks like an underspend isn't because the DFE do all sorts of calculation and we don't know what the clawback is, so as Amanda's rightly said, there will be a final early years DSG outturn that we'll, that we'll report on, quite a number of agenda items there colleagues, for our future meeting. Autumn's a busy time.
October is always one of our busiest meetings, so it, it's imperative that everybody comes very prepared for that meeting and have taken soundings from, from others in their sector if they, if they wish to do so in advance of the meeting, and as Adrian said earlier, we want to move towards having alternative representatives if people are unable to attend on the day, so that will be particularly important for the October meeting when there is a lot of voting to do, we do need to make sure we're core it, and that we have representation across all the different education settings, thank you, thank you. Okay, so that meeting will be on Thursday the 13th of October at 9.30, thank you all very much for your time and all of your contributions this morning, we had, we had a lot of useful debate about the different topics and people's views, which is very, which is the reason that Schools Forum exists, is, is to share that thinking and to come to joint solution, so thank you all very much for your time this morning and I'll see you in October, have a good summer, thank you, bye.